Welcome to I Can See Clearly Now. My name is T.R. Carr. Today, we're interviewing Farah Khan, candidate for city council for the city of Farmington Hills. Our goal is for you to be able to hear answers from the candidates in their own words. So Farah, welcome to I Can See Clearly Now. I always ask, how should I reach you? It's Farah, Mrs. Khan. What is your preference?
You can call me Farah.
Okay, Farah. Okay, great. We'll do that. Let's begin. And we'll ask a series of questions that are designed to help people learn more about you. One thing we would say is that being a member of the Farmington Hills City Council is a very, very part-time position. It meets a couple of times a month, sometimes a little bit often, but usually it's very, very part-time. So what is your motivation for seeking the position of Farmington Hills City Council?
I've been a resident of Farmington Hills for over a decade, and I've been involved in Farmington Hills City for more than 15 years. I used to come to this community while I was not living in Farmington Hills. So Farmington Hills is something very close to me. The community is very beautiful here. I mean, I have raised my children here. And I've been involved with city council, going back and forth. How I see the time right now of Farmington Hills is at a critical point, turning point. And we need the leadership that actually listens to the residents and take their concerns and act upon it. And I've not seen that happening in those meetings that I was present at. But I have been involved. Like, I'm part of Farmington Hills Health Commission for over a year. We are doing some great work there. We are trying to make it better. And I see how getting involved actually bring the change. And meeting people, talking to them, listening to them, learning their concerns, and just thinking about, like, okay, how can I make it better? How can I take these concerns and turn them into some actionable items, something we can actually do collectively? And that was the motivation behind it. Basically, it's just that people were like, you know, you should run. And I'm like, you know, okay, maybe it's a good idea, you know? I'll see. And then that just brought me to just thought about, okay, you know what? Let's do it.
Next question has a couple of parts. Number one deals with campaign finance. We know that we can go to Oakland County and file campaign finance reports. So we just ask in advance, what do you anticipate will be your campaign budget for this particular campaign seeking the office of...
Well, I was told, since this is my very first time, I am not a career politician. I am a mom, a resident, a family friend, a neighbor in Farmington Hills. So I have as much information about the budgeting, about how things work, as any person, as any housewife. I'm not a housewife.
How much were your campaigns?
I did not set any budget, and I was trying to raise some money. I was told a good campaign budget would be between $15,000 to $30,000, but I am nowhere near that.
Now, where would you anticipate your funding coming from? Will it come from individuals?
Yes.
What is your source? Is it going to be from...
I am just asking family. I'm asking friends. I'm asking community members. I even haven't reached out to the local businesses yet. I was just asking, like, the people I know and the people I meet. And I'm like, you know what? If you want me to represent you, I need your support. So it's just common, everyday people.
Okay. The office of city council member is nonpartisan, not allied with any political party, and yet you're running as a Green Party candidate. I would just ask you, what attracted you to the Green Party to run as a member of that particular political party?
I am more inclined to Green Party after, honestly, the past two years or so, or a little more, maybe, you know, two and a half years or so. I was not involved in any politics. Like, I am an activist by nature. I care for humanity. I care for people. But how I saw things happening and how I see the people representing us at a higher level are so despicable. They are not worthy of our vote. They are not worthy of representing us. That was the point where I was like, you know what? We need to break these two-party chains. And I was completely against both parties at that time. I was like, I'm not going to support any of these parties. We'll go with the Green Party because their values, they resonate with mine. They actually have morals, you know, which is kind of rare thing to see in politics right now, nowadays, I should say. So that was my inclination towards Green Party. So I got more involved, and then I've become a member of Arab-American, Arab and Muslim-American Green Caucus. And also, the point that people don't have much trust in Green Party. I mean, they like the Green Party. That's what I'm experienced with when talking to people. They like it. They like their values. They like their policies. But they're like, you know what? Green people never win. And I'm like, this is the reason the green people don't win, because we think like that. We need to change this mindset. We need to support Green more. But I'm also involved in Democratic Party. I became a member of Michigan Democratic Progressive Caucus because I was like, you know what? We need to bring the change from within. I will be Green, and I will be a Democrat, and I will try to bring good to both parties. So that's why, I mean, I'm just giving you a background of what I am. But yeah, I decided to run Green, even though it's nonpartisan.
Okay. All right. One thing that I would follow up on is, one issue that's currently on the policy agenda for Farmington Hills deals with senior services. Farmington Hills has signed a contract with a company to review all of, we call special services.
Excuse me.
That's basically park and rec. And senior services is one division of park and recreation. They've contracted with a firm out of Atlanta, Georgia, to review all of this. And one of the issues is, what do we do with senior services? They're currently located at the Caustic Center. That building needs to be replaced. One thought is to rebuild senior services at the 11-mile location. Another thought was to move, do something with OCC, Oakland Community College. That is not probably viable because they're building a minor-league hockey arena at that site. The third site that has been identified is the HAWK, which would involve extensive renovation. So I want to ask you, what is your position on the location and the future of senior services in the city of Farmington Hills?
I believe that seniors are a very integral part of our community, and we should value their concerns, and we should address them with respect and with thoughtfulness. And I think, since Caustic Center is very dear to our citizens, our senior citizens, we should come up with a plan to actually rebuild it and make it the way they want it. I mean, we are a very, I think we are a good, thriving city, and keeping our seniors happy and healthy, it should be one of our biggest priorities. And I am happy and ready to think outside the box. You know what? I heard about there's a budget problem, and if they want the Caustic Center, we should give them the Caustic Center. We should come up with the budget plan. We should come up with the resources. I'm ready to do a fundraiser for the Caustic Center. I am ready to look into different grants that we can, you know, tap into from the federal or state government. So this is what I'm thinking. You know what? This is absolutely necessary. We need more recreational areas. HAWK is a good facility, good. It's a very good facility, and it caters to our young people, our young community, which I'm very happy about. But we should absolutely, absolutely not get rid of Caustic Center. We should be able to rebuild it, and I will try to do everything in my power as a person and as a councilwoman to take care of that problem and get that rebuilt for our seniors.
Okay. One thing to understand, and as I've talked with other candidates for city council, is city council has one vote. The mayor has one vote. The mayor has basically ceremonial powers to preside over the meeting, but the city council approves the agenda, the city council approves the budget, and it requires a coalition of at least four votes to get anything done. So how will you be able to secure the support of additional city council members for some of the agenda items that you've listed?
This is something that actually came up with somebody from the resident. They actually asked me, like, how do you plan to do? I mean, what's your position? And I said, you know what? Let me be clear on, like, I thought, you know, just becoming a city council person is like, okay, you know, I can do things. You need coalition. I'm just one vote, like you said. So we need to work collectively. We need to create collaboration. We need to bridge the gaps. And I'm ready to do that. You know, I mean, you have a question. We may have different opinions, but our end goal is the same. You know, we may want different means for the end result, but the end result is the same thing. We want the betterment of our community. We want the success for our city. We want our residents to be happy. So I am ready, and I'm open for any dialogues. I am hoping to have actual one-on-one discussions with the rest of the council and be able to explain why I think what I think. And I think the people deserve to know, also, that your council people, what they voted for and why they voted for it. You know, we are missing the why there, and I want to bring that transparency, that accountability, and bridge the gap between the community and the council as well. So I have this, naturally, I have this ability to connect with people. It's a God gift. So I am able to talk to people. I am able to, and I have this good quality of listening. So when you listen to understand, you have a different perspective rather than when you're just listening to respond. I don't want to listen to respond. I want to listen to, to understand what's the worry behind your words? What's the living experience that you're bringing to me? Why you think what you think? So that actually gives you a different kind of, like, connection with that person. So this is what I'm thinking, like, I am ready to talk to all council people. I know we all love our city. We all want what's the best for our city, and why not work together, you know?
Okay. I have a series of questions to ask you about your platform, and you have a lot of specific things on here. So again, these questions are designed to elicit your response in your own words to them. I know, I'm looking at, one thing you've talked about is housing affordability. And you talk about support for first-time homebuyer assistance program. The city council doesn't have authority to do that. And so the question for me is, as you've listed some of these things about financial assistance for homebuyers, the city council doesn't do that. It's not part of, not part of the policy process. You want housing affordability. How will you work to achieve that, even though that's outside the purview of the Farmington Hills City Council?
Yeah. See, that tells you that I am from the people, like, how people think, and not thinking, like, okay, our city has the, like, bearing over that. But what I see is, our city, our council people, our mayor, has connections with the state, has connection with the federal government. We need to work with them. This is something that is important for our city. Housing affordability. I'm talking about what we can do is, we can do inclusionary zoning. That is within the bearings of our...
What do you mean by... Inclusionary zoning. Just take a couple of seconds to clarify.
Sure, sure. So what it means is, you make sure that the developers who are, who are building this new community, they have some units reserved for the people with not, like, with the more affordable prices. Like, for instance, I know that the median house value, like, range in my Farmington City is, like, $375,000. Not everybody can afford that. I mean, they're talking about affordable housing that's starting from $450,000 to $650,000. I'm like, that does not sound affordable to me. I can afford that. I'm sure a lot of people cannot afford that. So inclusionary zoning is one thing. Then we, what we can do, I know that Farmington Hills is known for its green spaces, open lots. Where we can, and 99% of Farmington Hills is already built. So there isn't much that we can build, but we need to be responsible. We need to think responsible when we are developing. We, what we can do is, we can use the existing infrastructure, the buildings that are empty, use them for housing purposes. You know, we can maybe bring in more apartment buildings. But the green spaces are very important. The characteristics of our neighborhoods are very important. We need to preserve that. So these are a few things. I cannot exactly tell you, T.R. Carr, that what my exact process is going to be. I have ideas, and I know that there are already solutions out there that other cities are practicing, that other, you know what? Other countries are practicing. What we need is just to find the right fit for our, for our problem and just adopt it.
It becomes an issue in Farmington Hills, the issue of high-density housing, because efforts to build high-density housing have not been successful because the residents in the neighboring areas of current population base of Farmington Hills does not want to see high-density housing. This is going to be an issue to pursue. And one thing I want to ask you about is, you've stated that you want to ensure a transparent decision-making process. Now, Farmington Hills, the council meetings are all in public. Work sessions are all in public. Everything's in public. What do you mean by a transparent decision-making process?
Like I said, what I mean by transparent decision-making process is, like, when we know that there's been a voting, we just know that the votes were, like, four noes or one yes, or whatever it is. We don't know who voted what and why. This is the transparency that we need to have. We need to know why you wouldn't no, and what's the reason behind it? If your vote was a yes or a no. Also, about the transparency is, like, we know we have public, everything's public. I get it. How many people understand what's, what happened in the, in the council meetings? I don't fully follow that. I don't. I need it to be broken down. For that, I would like to have more town halls. I would like to have more connect dialogue, more connection with the people, more direct dialogues with the people. Okay, you know what? I'm holding a coffee. I am coming in this neighborhood. Let's come. Come together. Have a dialogue. Tell me what your problem is. This is why I said what I said in the vote. You have a problem, you have a question about how I voted on this last agenda, on this proposal? This is what my vote was. This is what I was thinking. This is the transparency I'm talking about. We don't have it right now.
Okay. Because all of our city council meetings are televised, and each council member, when they vote, they vote public, you know? And you go around the, so that the public can begin to ascertain attitudes and values from that. But if I hear you, you're talking about transparency in terms of town hall meetings, something like that. Is that what you're saying? The next question I have deals with, you say transparency in the budget process. The budget is online, the whole budget hearings, and again, those are all open meetings. So what do you mean by having a, I guess you're talking for a more transparent budget process? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what do you mean by transparent budget process?
Like, again, the thing, I don't understand the budget, what they say, what it's, what they talk about. There are a lot of people, like, I met with the community, and they were like, we don't know. And how many people do you think would actually watch all of these meetings? So what I mean by transparency is, like, it should be available for people, not by just looking. I don't have time to watch two-hours meetings or three-hours meetings every, every, you know, now and then. We should be able to have some digital dashboard or sort of thing where people can actually go and see, okay, what's happening, what's happening in our city. Also, to break down the process, make it simpler, make it easier to understand for people. And I don't know how we're going to do it. I just have this idea, but how to put, like, pieces of the puzzle together, that's another process. Also, the, when I say transparency of budget, transparency of votes, transparency of everything, it comes down to having, talking to people, you know? Have a coffee meeting, may meet in the park, more events to create. I am thinking about creating more events where people can actually come and be like, you know, very informal, ask me questions, this is what's happening, listen to them. Okay, now they feel connected. Now they trust the people they see, and they know what they're doing and how they're doing. So this is the idea of me saying transparent and connected to people.
One thing you also, I'm just dealing with things that you, on your webpage, you've talked about resident-centered spending. What do you mean by resident-centered spending? Because if you look at the council, they're always at the eye ring, spending about roads, spending about park and rec, spending about other, other public services. So I assume you believe that resident spending needs to be increased? Are you satisfied with current resident spending? What do you mean by the term resident-centered spending?
So resident-centered spending means, to me, is asking them, what is it that we need to do with the budget? Right now, I mean, what we see, like, we have a standard, like, you know, we are going to spend this much on roads, spend this much on, on infrastructure, this much on different services. When you have a dialogue with people, you ask them what your problems are. So that's where you prioritize their needs on top of what we just do, A, B, C, D on the agenda. No, I don't want that. I want us to talk to people and ask them, okay, what are the real problems you are facing right now, everyday problems? We prioritize them over all of these items on, you know, on the paper, and make these things a priority. Spend on those first. Take care of the residents first. Take care of the concerns. That's like, I know all of these things are important. All of these things are important. But just prioritizing them according to the needs of the people, catering to the needs of the people, that's what I mean by resident-centered budgeting.
When it comes to transportation, you say support expansion of sustainable transportation options. One of the issues that we face in Farmington Hills is that we do not have a central employment district, and that's really true of the entire Detroit metropolitan area, that we have large corporations, we have small businesses, and that's true. People live in Farmington Hills, but they work elsewhere in the Detroit metropolitan area. So what do you mean by expanding sustainable transportation options for the city of Farmington Hills?
More transportation for the city, like, maybe have green buses, you know? We should come up with, with some, make transportation easy. And when I say especially for our seniors, especially for our seniors, I've spoken to quite a few people elderly, and they're like, they don't have the means to go anywhere. So some sort of transportation that is also green, environmentally friendly, and cater to the city needs. And it will also help our environment with the pollution. You know, we need to go green. We need to start using sustainable green environmental technology for, be it the, you know, for the housing, for transportation. We need to use solar. We need, we have good sun in Michigan. We should go green. We should, we should use solar energy. We should use wind energy. We should come up with, I know our South Farmington Hills City is a lead in, you know, green energy for the city buildings, but I want that to be able, I want our residents to be able to use that kind of amenities, use kind of these services to be, to be available to them. They should have access to it. I know we are good. We are at a good place, but we need to, there's always room to make it better. There's always room to make things, things are somewhat working. We need to make them, like, absolutely good.
As I look at your literature and listen to your responses, what do you think to be the two or three greatest challenges facing the city of Farmington Hills that you would want to address, should you be elected to the Farmington Hills City Council?
First and foremost is affordable housing, because a lot of residents, they are not able to afford housing here. And they said their children are moving away because they can't afford housing here. So that is one thing that I absolutely want to, to address. And again, I want to, I'm ready to think outside the box, you know? I know the things that we have been doing are not really working for our people, so we need to come up with alternative plans. Affordable housing. Then, next thing is, there's quite a few things. I know Caustic Center is a big, big concern for our people, so that is also a priority that I want to, you know, tackle in, as my first few priorities, come up with a plan to rebuild or sustain Caustic Center, make it, make the, if we cannot rebuild it, maybe we should be able to just do the renovations and the things that need to be fixed there. Another thing is, we have deer overpopulation, which is also a problem, and a lot of residents complain about. We need to partner with the wildlife, come up with humane, data-based solutions to tackle that problem. Roads, I know roads are being worked on, but still, we need to have a better communication with the residents. Timelines. We need to have a live dashboard where people can see the impacts of, you know, construction, wherever we are doing the infrastructure changes, to make their life easy. A lot of us spend a lot of time on the road, and it's just stuck in traffic. We need to make the traffic lights better. I know there's quite a few traffic lights that are way too long, and that's just not convenient for the residents. So these are a few things. And I am open to connect with people at all levels, you know, at going forward, during the process, ask them, okay, you know what? This is, this is the plan. How can we make it better? And sometimes you get the ideas, you know? People know what they want and how it can be done. It's just, needs to be put into action, and this is going to happen when you have a dialogue on a constant basis. So that's what my priorities are for now.
One of the tenets, or basic foundation parts of the American political system, is compromise. Being able to compromise on a, you want to build a, pick an issue, I want to build a road here, you want to build it there. Compromise is really baked into the American political system. So I'd ask you, you know, what is your position on, would you be able to compromise with other members of the city council or with other governmental units? When state money comes down, it's typically directed for a policy or a program that state wants, that's something you might not prefer. What is your position? What is your position on being able to make political compromises to achieve objectives?
That is a very tricky question. Uh, I am not, I would say uh compromise, you have to deal, you have to weigh the, the pros and cons.
I, I would agree. It's a tricky question because I'm a former mayor. And nine years in the office of mayor in, in Missouri, it's very tricky. So again, I don't want to interrupt you, but just say, I understand what you're saying. But how do you deal with that?
Uh, compromises could be good or bad. It could go both ways. I think if we do need to make a compromise, we need to keep the picture, like bigger picture in, in our sight. Make sure that, okay, maybe this little compromise will, will get us a, a greater good. And I think when you're making compromises, you need to absolutely, absolutely keep your people uh in confidence. You gotta, you have to let them know. You have to inform them that this is what happening. Maybe have a special town hall. You know what? This is what we have come to. What do you guys say? This is the compromise we need to make. Tell us what, if there's another way. And oftentimes, you know, I tell you, you know, you and I could be thinking, you know, the, the solution to this problem is just A, B, and C. But when we have 10 more people, we may have a D, and E, and F, you know? And then we have more choices to choose from. And I think being open, being transparent, and being honest, even if you make a difficult decision, if you're being honest and you have your people's trust, trust me, it'll work for you and your people. So that's just, that's how I think about any compromises.
What if I say, this is your chance? You know, you're seeking people's vote. On a personal level, why should I vote for you? Or why should anybody else? Could you give me the uh, two or three reasons why a member of the public should vote for you, for a City Council member?
Yes. So what I would say to you is like, I'm asking for your vote because I'm ready to ask the hard questions. I am ready to push the, the limits. I am ready to come to you. I'm ready to listen. And I am here to listen to you. I'm here to take your input and turn it into something actionable that could benefit our whole community. Um, I have a, I, like I said, I, from my uh work experience and as a person, I've always been a people person. I've always been like happy around people, helping people. This is, just comes naturally to me. So being able to connect with your residents, I want you to see me as your friend. I want you to see me as your, your neighbor, as your uh, a fellow person, a, a mother whose, whose kid is going to the same school. Come to me, connect with me. And I have this ability to connect with people. I, what also sets me apart is I am the person who has been organizing community, bridging the gaps. I want us all to be, work collectively towards the same thing. It doesn't matter who it is. It doesn't matter who, I know there's, it's, it's a few people and all of them are good. But what makes me a better fit is because I can connect with people. I uh can take your, your word. I'm not shy to speak my mind. Trust me, I will do that. And that is something that you should have in your councilperson. Um, so if you want somebody who wants to listen to you, who is ready to take your uh ideas and take it to the council and take it to higher up, um, who is uh ready to ask the hard questions and bring accountability, transparency and uh to, to the processes, to our governors, I'm your person. Vote for me.
Thank you. This has been I Can See Clearly Now. TR Carr, the host. And we have been interviewing Farah Khan, candidate for City Council for the city of Farmington Hills. Thank you very much for being
Thank you, TR Carr, for having me.
Okay. Have a good day.
You too.